All those meeting in order, Board of Franklin County Commissioners, Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, it's 8:30. Roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dunn?
Present.
Ishaire Dickinson. Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Join me in my allegiance and standing for the invocation.
Good morning, it's a pleasure to be with you. I have a quick quote, a quick Bible verse, and then a prayer. The quote comes from Bob Goff. He writes, "I keep putting things in the microwave, then God keeps putting them back in the crock pot. Whatever is distracting you today, give it a little more time." And the verse comes from Psalm 33, verses 20 through 22. "Our soul waits for the Lord; he is our help and our shield; for our heart is glad in him, because we trust in his holy name. Let your steadfast love, O Lord, be upon us, even as we hope in you." Let's pray. Holy Father, we come to you this morning, knowing that your time is not always the same as our time. And so, as we go about our days, and we think about all the decisions that we need to make, big and small, we pray that we will be ever mindful of you, that we will be patient for you to show up. We have faith that you will. We pray that you would be moving and working in our lives, in the lives of our families, and in the lives of all of those in this community. We pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Derek, any correspondence?
Just what's on there, Roy, thank you.
Okay, we have a proclamation this morning from the Extension Council. Come on up, girls, the guys.
Well, thank you for letting us come and present in front of you this morning, our proclamation. It's National 4H Week, our new 4H year kicks off here in October. I am Jessica Flory, I'm your 4H agent for Frontier District, which is Franklin, Ohio, State and Anderson County. I started November 1 of last year, so I've been here for a year. I'm sorry, I'm just now getting in front of you guys and introduce you. I know some of you, I grew up with Colton High School, so thank you for all you do. I'm gonna let the 4Hers introduce themselves, and then we'll get to our proclamation.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Adele Higbee, I'm from Franklin County, and this is my 10th year in 4H. I am Miss 4H this year for Franklin County, so I am in service as Miss 4H.
Where do you go to school?
I go to school at West Franklin.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lane Higbee, I am, this is my 11th year in 4H. I currently serve, I served as the President for the Appinest Trailblazers 4H Club for five years, and I currently serve as the Council President for the Franklin County 4H Council. I'm currently 18 years old, and will be going to Butler Community College next year.
All right. Thank you both all for coming, and we got a proclamation here.
Do you want the kids to read it, Commissioner Dunn, or do you, do you read it?
Would you guys like to read it? Do you have one in front of you? Go ahead.
Our proclamation is this, "Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization, having supported almost 6 million youth across the country thus far, and whereas 4H has helped 210 youth in Franklin County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas 4H is delivered by Cooperative Extension, a community of more than 100 public universities across the nation that provide experiences where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4H offers young people, and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Franklin County, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. Whereas 4H Network of 600,000 volunteers and 3500 professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designated October 2nd through the 8th, 2022, as National 4H Week throughout Franklin County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4H, for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime."
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Definitely, yes, I really appreciate all of the 4H tells, and if you'll come forward. I have a proclamation here, you're gonna put a seal on that?
I can take care of it later.
Thank you. Come get your, come get this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Perfect.
Thank you for coming in. Well, it's good to have these young people come in and do presentations in front of us, and hear what they're doing. Usually, we only hear negative things about what young people are doing. Now, we have a real example of some outstanding citizens, and a good organization is 4H. No public comment, I take it?
Nope.
Okay, Consent Agenda, we have approval of the payroll, the pay period of August 21st through to September 20th, 2022, Approved vouchers of $260,477.77. Tax change orders of a minus $692.62. Commission meetings minutes for September 28th. Study session minutes for October 3rd. Consider and approve soliciting bids to replenish our stock of tires. David Lee, Public Works Director. You want to say anything about that, real quick, David?
This is a pretty typical thing that we do a few times a year. This order is a little bit smaller than the orders that we do in the spring and summer. This is to get us through the end of the year with a healthy stock of tires.
And the last thing is a grant of easement from Daryl Flynn and Flynn Family Trust, lot split number 2208-1983, and get a cook, planning and building director. Anything on this? Okay, that's our consent agenda, I'll entertain the motion. Motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, Roy, we have council here for BNN Petroleum, which is our third item. Can we go ahead and move that up to number one?
We're considering the approval of rezoning application 2208-1985, BNN Petroleum, rezoned approximately 20 acres, and go ahead and you finish it up.
The Board, I'm sure, is familiar with this property, and we had a request this last year that also was on this property for rezoning, but also with a special use permit. That previous request was denied, it's just not being consistent with our zoning regulations and our comprehensive plan. And while this rezoning is for the same zoning district, staff did feel like it was sufficiently different than the previous request to allow it to be heard before the one-year time period had expired from the denial of the original request. So, this request is to rezone the property that's at the southeast corner of I-35 and Tennessee Road. I would note that our comprehensive plan does show that property as being anticipated for commercial development. There are other properties on the west side of the road that are already rezoned for C-2 Highway Commercial, so this is very similar. There's also other businesses that are operating along that area. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval by a vote of four to two, and as I noted in my staff report, we did have a few people that appeared at the hearing expressing just general concern in regards to the rezoning. I believe most individuals understood that eventually this area was probably going to be commercial at some point. I think the general concern was whether our regulations were sufficient to deal with some of the impacts that might be caused by this development, and how it would affect neighboring residential properties. I believe that's the primary issue that people had. At the end, I believe, the majority of the Planning Commissioners felt that, based off of our comprehensive plan and the C-2 district regulations, the property was appropriate to be rezoned to C-2. I have recommended two conditions be approved as part of the rezoning request, and the Planning Commission agreed to those, that drainage plan would be required as part of the, before any building permit could be issued, and also that a traffic study would be done, so that we can make sure that any entrance location is going to be in an appropriate location on that property. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and as was stated, the council for the applicant is here, and could probably answer more questions as well.
Anybody have any questions about this? Reasonable use for the land. Any other remarks about this? And a couple of people oppose this rezoning.
Yes.
And one was opposed, and one was pretty much requiring more information according to your narrative?
One, yes, so, I don't know that I'd say either of them were fully opposed. I think most of them were just concerned with how it would impact, and again, you know, we don't have any specific standards on lighting, and, you know, how that might cast light on to neighboring residential property. And, you know, there was some concern in regards to, you know, increased traffic, and how that might impact the area, but, you know, a lot of places in Franklin County, you know, this is on a paved road, it's directly adjacent to the interstate. You know, of any place, this is probably one of the better places for this to go. You know, I think there was some discussion a little bit about, you know, we have a truck stop up in Wellsville, and we have another truck stop on the south side of Ottawa. You know, is it better for those to be, you know, both of those are located where there are sewer systems and more infrastructure available, is that more appropriate? But again, our comp plan does recommend for commercial at this location, and there should be at least sufficient water to handle definitely domestic purposes, and then, depending on the specific application that's submitted in the future, there could be requirements that might limit the size of their development if they aren't able to deal with fire suppression and some of those other issues. But those are more future issues, so.
Well, is this gonna be a truck stop there?
My understanding is that is what their desire is, and that they're going to try to market it to other entities to try to develop it for that. My understanding of how it was specified at the hearing, if they cannot find somebody that would be willing to do that, then they would be interested in actually moving forward and developing the property themselves, and that they do have truck stops at other locations, that they do actually physically operate as well. So, but, this rezoning does allow for any use that's permitted in the C-2 district, and that was probably the main discussion we had, is we, as much as the applicant is saying this is what they want to do, we have to look at the appropriateness of that zoning, and every type of use that's permitted for this property, rather than...
Rezoning, not a special use permit?
Yes, yep.
This seems like five acres is not big enough for a truck stop.
Yeah, as I say, this one, it described as 20, I think with some of the highway right-of-way that's been taken out, it's probably closer to 17 acres in size, so it's probably a little small to have a lot of the truck parking. There is also a couple pipelines that cross the property that are going to further restrict what they can do. You know, but again, I think once they submit a development plan, those constraints are gonna come forward, and will probably be limits in regards to the extent of the building that can happen.
Okay, any, any other questions about this one?
Nope.
This is a...
Right if I make the motion?
Yeah, I'll take the motion for...
All right, motion to approve resounding application 2208-1985 with the two conditions.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next over business here is... Okay, it's all yours, I guess.
Yes.
Go back to item one now.
One, okay, okay. I show, this is the application for rezoning by Moody, which is a request to rezone 3.14 acre tract from the A-1 Agriculture District to the R-3A Single Family Residential District. The Planning Commission ended up holding a couple public hearings on this request. When it first came forward, we didn't have documentation in regards to the well and septic system, so it took them a little bit of time to do a little bit of research, and data gathering, to put that information together. It ended up being determined by patching that the well does provide sufficient capacity in order to serve the existing residents, and so that was good. And then, Brian Falk, DNS sanitation, went out and did the inspection, and the existing lateral field appeared to be operating correctly, and met all the setback requirements from the new property lines that were being proposed. So that sort of addressed the main concerns, I think, that the Planning Commission had at their original hearing. They did make a recommendation of approval of the request. The main reason for this is that the owners were desiring to build a new house. We only permit one house on the property, so they're needing to split off the existing house site. They have at least specified no intent to actually sell it, but just this would allow them to build a new residence there.
Any questions about this one? Pause the motion, it would be, I make the motion to approve rezoning application 2206-1972, Moody, rezoned approximately 3.14 acres from an A-1 Agriculture District to an R-3A Single Family Residential 3-acre District, and to mend the Fishtail County zoning map accordingly. So move. Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
This is a request to rezone a 5-acre tract, or by Flynn Family Farms, to rezone approximately a 5-acre tract from the A-1 Agriculture District to the RE District. If you looked at the maps in the survey that was included in the file, you'll notice that the entire property is pretty much a whole quarter section plus another 80 adjacent to it, that's all considered one property under the legal description. Rather than requiring them to go through the exempt split process and file new deeds, what I worked with them is, is to show that on the lot split survey, so that we do allow properties that are being split off that will all remain more than 40 acres in size, are exempt. And so that's basically what's shown on the plat, and then, the one tract C, which is approximately 80 acres, it's a little less with an old school site that had previously been taken out of it, is the part that will be split off to create a new 5-acre tract with the existing dwelling site on it. The current owner will retain ownership of the existing dwelling site, and another individual that lives in the area is actually wanting to purchase all of the agricultural land. So, his intent is to continue using it for agricultural purposes, and I think this property actually had formerly been in his family's possession before anyways, so trying to put it back into ownership under his family. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation of approval of the request, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, can you listen? Okay, this would be a, consider approval of rezoning application 2208-1982, Flynn Family Trust, to rezone approximately 5 acres from an A-1 Agriculture District to an RE Residential Estate District. Motion to approve.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
I have one other thing on this one, okay, it was a, was a... A motion to accept the grant of public, public road and utility easement from Daryl Flynn.
Yeah, that was the part that was approved during the consent agenda, so, so that...
That was it, okay.
Yep, yep.
Just taking care of it, okay. Good enough.
How did you vote on that, Roy?
What?
How did you vote on it? You didn't vote.
Well, I voted yes.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, David.
Okay, Commissioners, the request before you is to approve the purchase of a Salt Dog Spreader from Blue Valley Tractor and Supply in the amount of $10,198. This is a material spreader that we use, that the Noxious Weed Department utilizes to help spread material in our parking lots, and subdivisions, and so forth. The material spreader that we have currently is 20 years old, and for the last several years, the gas motor that we, that operates that has been a continuous maintenance issue. It seems like our shop is working on that multiple times throughout the winter to keep it operational, and we would like to purchase a new spreader with an electric motor that we feel like will be a little bit better situation for us, a lot more reliable, so that we spend more time spreading material than working on it in the shop. We did get, we solicited bids from three different companies for like, for a like spreader, and the Salt Dog Spreader from Blue Valley was the cheapest option for us, and we'd like to move forward with that purchase.
Any questions about this?
And this will be paid from the Noxious Weed Special Equipment Fund.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, David.
The next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing MHC Kenworth out of Alatha to complete repairs on a 2015 Peterbilt in the amount of $11,427.59. This truck is down with injector issues. This is the fourth truck this year that have had, that has had similar issues. These trucks are vital to our operation, and so getting them back up and going again is very important to us, especially with winter coming on. We did seek three bids to replace the injectors, and MHC Kenworth out of Alatha submitted the lowest and best bid. I think it's important to note that, you know, this is our fourth set of injectors that we've, that have come up this year. All of these are expensive repairs. We did ask around to see if there was something that we were doing that caused this, and the response that we get back is, any of these trucks with 200,000 miles plus, it is a common issue. We have four additional heavy trucks that are approaching that 200,000 mile threshold, so, you know, we're anticipating that we're gonna be going through this exercise again. Hopefully not soon, hopefully it's in the next budget cycle, but we do anticipate this happening again. So, MHC with the, in the amount of $11,427.59 is the lowest bid. If you look at some of the other bids, they all, all three of the bids included tax. We don't pay tax. A couple of the other bids included core charges. Those are, and Kirk is here to correct me if I'm wrong, but those cores are generally credited to us, if there's nothing wrong with them. And so, apples-to-apples comparison is without tax and without the cores. And MHC submitted the lowest bid.
Do they warrant to the repairs?
Yes, sir.
I mean, for how long?
Yeah. All of these companies, I feel, treat us very well with regard to warranty work and those sorts of things. We do enough business with each one of them, either buying parts or having them make the repairs that, you know, a lot of times, if it's questioned, they will go ahead and take care of it as a warranty item.
These are repairs we can do here locally, or in our shop.
Well...
Or they need special equipment or something like that to do them?
We did do one, we replaced injectors on one of the, one of the other trucks. This one's a little bit more involved, and it's also a, you know, whenever we send these vehicles out for repair, part of our determination is, what do we have on our plate currently with our existing staff and the other items that we have ongoing? And so that's part of the decision as well.
Roughly, what's the new truck, 100?
No, they're, they're quarter million plus.
Okay, so, one year's interest on the new truck would be more than that. So if it gets us rolling for a year, it's a better value.
Yeah, and these, these, this particular truck, and the other, like them, aren't scheduled to be replaced until 2030, so, you know, we're about halfway through the life of these vehicles.
Yeah.
Any other questions, David? Pause the motion, read, make a motion. Authorize MHC Kenworth of Alatha to complete repairs to a 2015 Peterbilt 4348, truck number 5038, in the amount of $11,427.59. Motion to approve.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
That concludes our regular business. Derek, do you have anything to share with us?
Yeah, I've got a handful of things. First, Joanna Bishop, our Communications Director, started this week. Roy, I know you were in and have already met her. Would encourage the rest of you, if you have time, to stop by. She comes to us from Advent Health. I've told you all, that interview... I've told you all, that interview process was, was incredible. Had three very, very good candidates, and, and we felt that Joanna rose to the top. Certainly excited about getting her started, and two days in, we've already got her plenty busy, so excited about that. Yesterday, Roy and I were at an FCDC executive board meeting, and I, I will tell you, and this isn't going to come as a surprise to anyone in this room, I'm not a fan of, of meetings. I, I think that ninety percent of meetings can be done in an email, but those FCDC executive board meetings are always useful. Paul just works his tail off, and continue to be impressed with him. I don't think that there was any one issue that we discussed yesterday, but he just, he, he's such a good partner with the school districts, with the cities, and, and so certainly want to hold him up and appreciate the work that he's doing. If you walk through the hallways here in the annex, you might notice little green plugs in the floor. Certainly, you can see the glue coming up. Unfortunately, we are having moisture issues in this building. We feared we might. So far, Campione has been great in working with us. They are going to, so what they have found based on their test is that the glue should be, withstanding the level of moisture that's in the concrete. So there's some concern there, but now they're going to conduct a more comprehensive test to try and find out where the moisture's coming from, so that's going to involve, I, I guess, bigger disruptions to the floor, so you might see cones in here, and, and so my point is, we're working on that, trying to figure it out, and hopefully we can get to the bottom of that. Wellsville Ambulance Station, been working with, with Tyler Ellsworth, actually, who is our bond counsel, on putting an agreement together, because in some way, shape, or form, we also want to use ARPA funds, been working with our consultant on that. The ball there is currently in our court. Just yesterday, I got, it's called a sub-recipient agreement from our ARPA consultant that we're going to ask the city of Wellsville to enter into, and then working with Tyler on trying to, to put the agreement together, so we have something to present to them, but that process is very much moving. And then, wanted to get feedback from the four of you. I am inclined to explore starting a tax sale, but don't want to get that process started without your blessing. The last couple that we've done have been at no expense to the county. I mean, we contract those out, but because those parcels are selling for so much, those expenses, we are allowed to use that revenue from the sale for those expenses. And even if we didn't have those, if I did it myself, it's not like we could keep that money. I mean, at some level, it ends up going back to the owner of the property who was delinquent on their taxes in the first place. So from my vantage point, there's absolutely no reason why we wouldn't contract this out, because I believe pretty strongly that we'll see enough revenue to cover those expenses. It cleans up the tax rolls, gets it put back to a productive use. So, do any of you have any objections to me? There'll be some formal action you need to take. I just want to talk with the treasurer, reach out to the attorney that has handled this the last several times. Any issue with that?
I'd encourage it.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Okay.
Go forward.
Okay, I'll do that. Then the last thing, and, and I don't think we've really had this issue here. David Andor, Sheriff Richards, might be able to comment on it, but there was a fairly spirited discussion yesterday on one of my listservs. It's just something that I want us to be aware of, but it pertains to the purchase of equipment and vehicles, but what a lot of governments are finding is that they will agree to a purchase price for a vehicle or a piece of equipment, and, and this recently happened down in Anderson County, and let's say it's for seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, company will literally show up with the vehicle, but ask for a hundred thousand or some higher amount, just because at some point in the process, their expenses have went up, and will literally say, if you don't pay a hundred, you don't get the vehicle. And come to find out, this has happened to, it's happened to several governments. We haven't seen it really here, but it's just something that, and I feel like we have good relationships with the companies that we use, but this has happened, I mean, it's happened in Wyandotte County, all the way down to smaller counties like Anderson, so it's, I know it's something that when we enter into these contracts, I'm trying to read that boilerplate a lot closer, because allegedly, there's new language that's been slipped in that gives these companies the right to do that, just because everything's so out of whack with supply and, so just something to, don't think it's incredibly pertinent for us today, but just something to think about down the line, should this ever happen. And that's really all I have, Roy.
I'm surprised to hear that.
Part of the, part of the issue is the lead times on, on being able to acquire the, the trucks, the chassis, and the equipment. I'm hearing that, in some cases, they're eighteen months out, and so the, the, the equipment sales folks are having trouble being able to, they don't know what the price is going to be. They can, they can reserve a build slot, but that pricing, eighteen months out, they, they're not able to guarantee that. Fortunately, our stuff is, that we've ordered recently, is a little shorter than that, and so I, I'm not anticipating any issues, but certainly, it's been a topic of discussion at some of the conferences I've been at. Generally, at these conferences, the exhibition halls are full of bright, shiny, new equipment, very, very sparse in, in the conferences due to lack of availability. These companies just don't have anything on-site. Things sell quickly, and they're just not manufacturing as many items, and so all of that is, is going into this mess that we're dealing with. I haven't heard, I hadn't heard that, that occurred down in Anderson County, but I will look into it. Definitely something that we need to keep an eye on.
And I don't know that it's just completely unwarranted price gouging. I mean, I do think that there, I mean, I think there's a lot of merit to what David is saying. I think it's just, it's something to keep an eye on, and it is those wait times. I mean, that's where governments are put in a bad spot, because it's, you know, okay, do you pay the extra X amount of money, or do you go right back to the beginning of the process and wait another eighteen months? And so there's no great way around it, but it's just something that we'll do our best to try and avoid those situations.
Yeah, to me, it don't like, it looks dishonest to me, because you could, you could low-bid something just to get the bid, and then, when you bring the vehicle in, or whatever it is, they, they say, well, now you owe another X number of dollars on top of that, so it's, it looks like it's opportunity for a little finagling there.
And I will tell you, one of the governments, they literally went as far as they sent, I mean, basically, they sent a demand letter to the company, asking for, the legal term is specific performance, saying this was our contract. If you don't honor this, basically, the government threatened to take the company to court. Company, of course, backed down, and government got it for the contracted price, but that's just, I mean, it's a very real thing that governments have been asked to deal with, so, just to keep in mind.
Okay, Kay, anything else you want to talk about? Chris, you, the other people? You're good, okay, good. Sheriff?
Morning, I will speak a little bit to that vehicle thing. As you know, it's been several months ago, and you, you all approved the purchase of a transport van, and at that time, our supplier had a van. Well, what that means in their world is not what I interpret that to mean. It means that they have it at that, it's reserved for them coming in to that dealership. We ran into that, as, as we've let Derek know, that Dodge across the country has been canceling orders on a lot of these places, and so we did run into that, to where there was a big delay. We now, they actually physically have a, have a van, and it is going to cost us, I believe, we told you, a couple thousand dollars more. We've negotiated with our provider that's doing that, they're eating half the cost, and then we'll, we'll pay that other additional cost, and we've let Derek know, we can, we can do that through our, through the jail trust, which is where we would have had to purchase that vehicle, had it not been for you guys spending the ARPA funds. So, we have seen that a little bit, there, our provider has, does have some concerns as far as vehicles coming into them for the next couple of years, so they've already reached out to us to find out for sure how many vehicles that we anticipate purchasing in twenty-three, and we have, so we've talked with them. They've got everything going on that, but it, it is a real thing that we're going to have to, that we're going to have to deal with. Right now, part of the problem is, it took us a little bit for them to get that van, but now there's still problems with the, with circuits and things like that, all these little electronic components for all the lights and radios and everything, and so those things are still delayed as well, and cost is going up. So I know that we work with SERV out of Andover, they've been a great company for us to work with, it has made it a lot more efficient, and the cost is much better than what we had, than we'd had before, and from checking things out, it's still more economical for us, but we do anticipate that prices are going to be up. I don't, again, like David said, we work well with our companies as well, and I don't think anybody's trying to gouge us in any way, but it is, is kind of what it is at, at this point.
And if I can interject, and, and I, I feel like the sheriff's situation is entirely different. I mean, it, it's, we're talking, you're getting an entirely different vehicle at this point.
That's correct, we are.
So it's not as if vendor shows up with contracted vehicle and says, we want, I think the difference in this case is five thousand dollars, it's an entirely different vehicle. Also, vendor has agreed to pay for half of it. I mean, that's a company that's doing their best to make it right, so I'm not at all concerned with the sheriff's situation. I think they've done a good job working with the vendor, think vendor's done a good job. That's not at all how the situation on the listserv is being described, as something entirely different than what the sheriff has experienced, so...
I wonder too, if the situation you're describing, you know, the seventy-five thousand, obviously, they said they'd sell us a vehicle that, they shouldn't enter into a contract if there's a chance they can't, but if it showed up and it cost them eighty-five, and they're, you know, all right, do I lose ten thousand dollars selling this, or do I just cancel that? You know, I mean, I understand, maybe they're in a bad position too, but ultimately, they shouldn't enter into a contract if you can't fulfill it.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with that call, and to, to defend the companies a little bit. I don't think this is being done completely in bad faith. I think that they are being hit with additional expense, so it's just a tough situation.
Yeah, I know Red Nautical Ford has forty-five thousand vehicles outside their truck plant in Kentucky waiting on parts. They're built, they just need something, but...
The last thing I have is that this Saturday is our Faith and Blue event. This is an annual event that, that we have with countywide law enforcement, and we partner with Houses of Worship to get together and have an event every year. This year, we have expanded it to include all of the Franklin County first responders, so EMS will be participating, and all the fire departments will be participating as well. And that'll be Sunday evening, starting at five PM. It'll be at Hope Anthem Church and outside, and, and then that block area there, and that's located at Thirteenth and Mulberry here in Ottawa. And that'll include agencies from not just within Ottawa, but all of Franklin County will be there. It's a free event, it's a good time to interact with all of the first responders, yeah, and get to know people on a more personal level, and we'll have food and available, you know, that'll be there for everybody, and then there's bounce houses and face painting and things like that for kids, so. And it's always a good time for on our end, and we always get good feedback for it, so that's this Sunday evening at five. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I would answer those now.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, thanks.
David, do...
Just real quick, Road and Bridge completed the ditching and road improvements on Eisenhower between Jackson and Haskell last week. They're starting the mile south of that down to Hamilton. They started that yesterday, so we're going to improve that mile as well. Also, in the last week, we've installed a couple of entrances and did the associated ditch work. We've removed trees along the rideaway at Woodson in Indiana, and then we had staff out Saturday and Sunday. On Saturday, they worked a wreck on Colorado south of Pomona, somebody hit our, our bridge abutment, did a little damage there, so we had folks out inspecting that. Then on Sunday, we had multiple signs vandalized out by Camp Chippewa. Just an aggravation, but...
Vandalized by locking them down, or...
Spray painting.
Spray painting?
Yep. And not just on county signs, but also on, my understanding, on some of the Camp Chippewa signage as well. So, that's unfortunate. So, other work, we've got other ditching projects that, that we're going to be doing following the, once we get done with Eisenhower, so we've got a few more of those. We'll take advantage of every good weather day that we've got to continue making some improvements.
Bennett? Hey, dude, how about Zeldas?
Well, Commissioner Stottemeyer was there also, but yesterday was the grand opening of Zeldas, which is the new bake shop, coffee shop, custard shop down at the corner of sixty-eight and, and Main, so it was a really great showing, lots and lots of people there, and they had some snacks and stuff for those people who waited, because, as you know, there are challenges with starting a new business, and they had their fair share of challenges yesterday morning, but they're working to overcome those things and ready to get started, and they're looking forward to filling the needs down there at that end of town and being a drive-through coffee shop for people when they're leaving town to go to work. So, anyway, it was a, it was a good, good event.
Thank you, Janet.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just going to hit on this lightly, because Paul's not here, and I'd rather he explain it. But I went to Wellsville meeting the other night. Most of the meeting was in concern with their request for approval for rural housing in city district, and the department, I'm going to let Paul get into most of the details of it, because he knows that stuff inside now. I'm just going to give you a layman's point of it, but they were approved by Commerce, and the first, it'll be, if you know where we're putting the ambulance service, it'll all be to the, to the east of there, in that same property that goes from the east back, the door back in there where it's going. And the, the first phase of it will be a ten, ten million, five hundred thousand dollar project, and it'll be sixteen units with one and, excuse me, six units with sixteen, sixteen units with six housing in each one. And then the second phase, there'll be eight units with the same amount of housing in there, and it's going to be a great deal for that community up there, and that's going to provide a lot of funding to help with the streets and, and everything, and that will, with us putting the ambulance service right there, possibly another three to four or five hundred people within a block of them, and it'll be, you know, be a good deal. And I know Ottawa's getting the same type of situation here in Ottawa, that I don't know the terms on it or anything, but we'll let Paul come in and explain it, but it's a big thing for that area up there, and I know, for too long, there'll be announcing some improvements. that area up there. And I know, for too long, there'll be announced some improvements to the truck shop up there, too, that we put in a couple more businesses there on that property there. So, so it's, it's a big deal for that, that end of the county and for for the county as a whole. And yesterday, I had a RT and D meeting here in this room. David attended as a representative from the Civil Rights Authority and the President. We had their coordinator, Erin Kay, and she gave us a PowerPoint of everything that she has done. She's done more, I guess, we explained it after she left, we bragged on her, that she's done more in the last two years than we've seen in the last several years before. And we're trying to, I know, we did increase her up to 29 hours. We mentioned that. And we have a part of our group that's working with a couple of the counties, and they'll be coming as commissioners eventually, if it happens. And maybe, three years ago, they approached us, and we didn't think there was enough going on to pursue it. We didn't want to, our coordinator was 20 hours late. We thought that was all she could handle. But now, with all the other grants, the work she's doing, we increased her up to 29. And if we can bring on these other two counties to our sound, Allen, and, yeah. And so, they approached us three years ago, and we kind of didn't take on what they wanted. But now we're going to re-approach that. Hopefully, that'll expand, and all the other counties will see, see that, the use of letting them join in and increasing hours of coordinator keeping her, because those people, types of people are hard to keep if they got those kind of qualifications. And if we don't try, at this point in time, try to expand and make a more fulfilling position to keep her on sound. So, but we had several things we talked about. We talked about the master fire plan, which aren't statewide, this about 15 years ago, when we got the 250,000 dollar grant statewide, to do audits of all these fire systems, and that requires and so forth. And that, what that does is, it documents what they provide, new equipment and their new training. And that's going to lower the high, high asset ratings for companies, lowering the cost of people's housing. So, that's what we're working on. Paul was there, giving an update on our economic control of the project we've been sponsoring. Possibly, we're only a little over a life of that. And he, the several other contractors, I'll get to him to be there, how much we are paying the company, well, we want several, several months, but they'll get to this part of the country. It's like, what, since it's any point, we're going to pay more than we can spend. So, we think that's good. We think that's a lot of money. 4,000 pounds this last year. And U S P had to buy around 30,000 or 40,000, 500,000, 600,000, 700,000, 800,000, in the 600,000. No, I think mine, bam, I think they tell me, we have a lot of title on the title, out there, acting on it, maybe I'm, and go, I was, I heard none. And it's acting well. I know it's counting everybody, some boy, prison, I think those, I think you are, that's something that they do. Take a week, it's not, it's not, it's not dead, but it's, it's not, keep, keep knowing, keep doing, I just, it's not, it's, I mean, we're not the rest, I mean, that's...
Cool?
No, no.
I think, I'm at the FCDC meeting, and Derek covered it fine. We had a good meeting. I went to the Lake Region meeting, and Don covered it fine. So, I don't have anything else. So, I'll entertain a motion to a chair.
Second.
Third, Jim.